Okay, I don't have my virtual call, but that's okay.
Thank you all for using the microphone.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Township of Edison, zoning board of adjustments, special meeting is now in session. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975 has been provided by the annual notice published in the Home News and Tribune on December 28, 2018, and has been posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex on January 4, 2019. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
Mr. Sedata?
Present.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Present.
Mr. Schmuel?
Here.
Mr. Kamba?
Here.
Mr. Vice Chair, Ski Bar?
Here.
Chairwoman Federick?
Here.
Mrs. Shaw?
Present.
All present?
Okay, thank you. We have one announcement. Case Z 53, 2018. It's going to be, not going to be heard for a vote this evening. It will be heard for a vote on July 30th. That's the next board meeting because in July we only have one meeting and it happens to be on July 30th. So that case will be on for July 30th. Having said that, my usual announcement, which I don't think is going to come into play this evening, but usually at 10 o'clock if we're still in session, we'll see where we are and what we'll be doing after that. Mr. Ayat, would you like to read the first case, please?
Yes, thank you. Case Z 24, 2019. Krishna Kant Sanghany, 23 Deborah Drive, Edison, New Jersey, Section 37, 4.16. Bulk variance sought to construct an oversized deck. Maximum lot coverage required for a deck in this zone is 3%. Proposed is 4.3%.
I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Effective property is in the RA zone designated as Block 546. S, Lot 11. All paperwork is in order.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
And could you please speak into the microphone and state your full name for the record?
My name is Krishna Kant Sanghany.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Sanghany. Would you like to tell the board what you would like to do and why you would like to do it, please?
Good evening, all the board members. I have been living in Edison City since 1982 at Falcon Drive. Recently, I purchased the house at 23 Deborah Drive in February 2019. I have been constructing now the basement and now that I would like to have the deck. Additional space or the additional variance is required for the deck because I have two children and I have grandchildren and we would like to have the enjoyment. And this deck will, is, will be at the back of the house and it will not interfere with the front side of the public. I have also talked to the backside of my neighbor and the left and right side of the neighbors and they said they will have no problem and they will enjoy with working or having a neighborship or friendship with us.
Okay.
And that's the reason that I'm requesting to give us the variance for the additional space for the deck.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions of the applicant? I don't see it.
Sir, did you receive the township engineer's report?
Engineer report?
Yes, the engineer's report.
Engineer has prepared the variance, what do you call it, zoning, this application.
That's a survey.
Yeah.
I believe you received it. I signed them the other day.
You did? Do you have an extra one?
Paul Fletcher has done all the work.
Yeah, no, there's, there's something else that usually goes out and Mr. Ayat said that he signed it the other day.
Were you at the counter by any chance? Did you speak to my technical assistant?
I don't understand your question.
All right. Let me just try and see if we have one upstairs because I did sign one and I gave it to Lillian.
No, but we don't have it.
Okay.
I think Bobini is looking now.
Okay, while we're looking for that, are there any questions by the board?
No, I've already asked and that was going to be the one question. Any other questions by the board? No. Okay, Mr. Ayat, do you remember Ayat? I'm sorry, I keep forgetting.
It's only been three years.
I assume that there was nothing on there other than the usual?
Correct.
It's right in front of me. It's still not? Ed? Can you, no, that's it? Okay.
Can you hear me, Esther?
Talk louder. A little louder? Okay, because I'm right in it. I'm sort of right on it. Okay, I'm assuming it's the usual?
Mm-hmm.
That he just has to come in for?
Yes, it is.
You have to come in for your permits? Okay?
Yeah, he's aware.
Okay, fine. Yes, Mr. Taglianetti?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at your plot plan and it shows on the right side of the house, a paver wall. Is that there or is it something you're going to put there?
I'm going to put there.
It's going to be put there?
That's correct.
So, does that have to be included in the impervious?
No, a deck is, a deck is pervious.
I'm talking about the walk that he's going to include.
He will put that, yes, yes. That's impervious. So that will be included as in, in his impervious coverage for the RA zone on his application.
So that's already taken into account?
When he applies for it, yes.
When he applies for it?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Taglianetti?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the board? Okay, there being none, I'll go out to the public. Anyone within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Anyone outside of 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? There being none, I'll go to the board, please, for determination.
Mr. Sedata?
No, we've got to make a motion first.
Oh, sorry.
(laughing) Do I hear a motion? So he can do a roll call.
I'll make a motion to approve. I believe it's a good addition to the neighborhood. I think it was a very good step that he's already reached out to his neighbors and informed them that he was going to do so and none of our out here today to disagree. So that's, I'm for this.
Second?
Now, Mr. Ayat.
Roll call. Mr. Sedata?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Mansouri?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Schmuel?
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Kamba?
Yes on the motion.
Vice Chair, Ski Bar?
Yes on the motion.
And Chairwoman Federick?
Yes on the motion. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And now you know, Mr. Ayat, he now knows what he has to do after this.
Yes, and you also have to wait for the, a copy of the resolution before you apply for your permits.
Yes.
So don't come up tomorrow and apply for the deck. You have to wait a little bit, okay?
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Good evening, sir.
Okay.
Okay, next case, Mr. Ayat.
Case Z 20, 2019. Saket Sharma, 45 Mel Bloom Lane, Edison, New Jersey, Section 37, 63-1, 7. All variance sought to build a deck. The home has a slope and cannot be utilized. Required 30 feet, proposed is 7 feet. Effective property is located in the RB zone in lots, in Block 694, Lot 23. All paperwork is in order.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I swear.
If you, if you could pick up the microphone and also, if you could sit down.
Yes, I swear.
Okay, and would you please state your full name for the record?
My full name is Saket Sharma.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Sharma.
Good evening.
Please tell the board what you want to do and why you want to do it, please?
Yeah, so I live at 45 Mel Bloom Lane and I think so my property is located at the lot which is mentioned here, 694, 23. The back of my property, which is pretty much in a slope, so it's pretty much not usable at this point of time. And what we want to do is really build a deck for the family to really enjoy. So that's why we are asking for a variance to build the deck.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Sharma? Yes, Mr. Ski Bar?
Sir, have you received the township engineer's report?
No.
Okay, let's see if this one is here. I think the only ones we have are here. All right, Mr. Ayat, I know you signed.
Jim works, Jim works.
Yeah, thank you.
If you have a hard time with the last name.
That's really better for me, thank you.
I know you're struggling.
Yeah, I have, I struggle. I don't know, maybe because when I see the letters together, you don't pronounce it as it looks. I'm sure you, you said you signed it.
Yeah.
Can you please tell Mr. Sharma what it says?
You'll comply with everything in the engineer's report when you do receive it from our secretary.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, there being none, I'll go out to the public. Anyone within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Anyone outside of 200 feet of the property?
Yes.
Come on up, sir.
I'm directly behind.
Wait, wait, you have to come up here and you have to state your name, your address.
My name is Carmen.
Hold on, hold on, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And would you please state your full name for the record, spelling your last and provide your address?
Carmen Troya, T-R-O-I-A, 5 Sharp Road, Edison, 08837.
And where are you in relation to the property?
Directly behind.
Oh, okay, all right. What would you like to tell us?
Well, I, I didn't quite hear, how far is it going to come? He needs, what's the, what's the difference, I mean, how close to the property line is it going to be?
Well, you know his, he has a patio there now?
Right, yes.
It's going to be just a little bit bigger than what his patio is right now.
Oh, all right, okay. I just thought it was going to come close to.
No, no.
I'm going to put up a fence in next year, so I wanted to be sure.
Am I correct, Mr. Sharma?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to be just maybe a couple of feet bigger than where the patio is now.
No, I just wanted to make sure, next year I'm going to put up a fence and I want to make sure I was able to do that.
No, no, he's, he's not going up the slope at all.
Okay.
He's stopping about where the slope is.
Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else within, or within, within 200 feet or outside of 200 feet wanting to be heard? Okay, there being no one, I'll close the case and go to the board, please, for a decision. Please.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve. I think it will improve the quality of the gentleman's yard and I don't see any, any issues with the, with the deck.
I second the motion.
Mr. Sedata?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Mansouri?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Schmuel?
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Kamba?
Yes on the motion.
Vice Chair, Ski Bar?
Yes on the motion.
Chairwoman Federick?
Yes on the motion. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sharma.
Thank you.
Next case, please.
Case Z 23, 2019. Mohammed Khan, 211 Central Avenue, Edison, Section 37-4. Bulk variance sought to construct a fence on the property line. Required setback is 12 and 1/2 feet, proposed is zero. Effective property is in the RB zone in Block 97. C, Lot 17. All paperwork is in order.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? And please state your full name for the record.
Hi, my full name is Mohammed Yunus Khan and I'll.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Khan. Please tell the board what you would like to do and why you would like to do it, please?
Hi, my property is on the corner lot in, on Central Avenue in Prescott, which is a deadened street and we are looking to have a yard space for us. We have a two-year-old and he's almost three feet tall, is right here, sitting behind me with his mom and we want to put the privacy fence there on the Prescott and the required setback is 12.5 feet and I've applied for zero.
Okay.
And it's outside the 25-foot triangle.
Yes, I was going to say, I went by there and basically the front of the fence is going to be even with the house and then it's going to go down a little bit in from the sidewalk and then across the back and back up and again?
Yes.
Even with the house, correct?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr.?
How close to the sidewalk will your fence be?
A foot.
A foot off of the sidewalk and it'll be six foot high?
Yes.
Okay. Just so my colleagues are aware of that.
Yeah, but, and, but there's not a problem with visual because that was one of the things to check.
Yeah, no, it's outside the triangle.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions from the board for the applicant? None? Okay, I'll go out to the public. Anyone within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? Anyone outside of 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard? There being none, I'll close the case and go to the board, please, for a decision.
Madam Chair, we'll make a motion to approve. The fence does not violate the site triangle and will provide security for, for his family.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Mr. Sedata?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Mansouri?
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Schmuel?
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Kamba?
Yes on the motion.
Vice Chair, Ski Bar?
Yes on the motion.
Chairwoman Federick?
Yes on the motion. Okay, thank you, sir. Good evening.
Thanks.
Case number four, Z 29, 2019. Ashesh Patel, 250 McKinley Street, Edison, New Jersey, Section 37.63-1, Sections 2, 3, and 6. Bulk variances sought to construct a single-family home on an undersized lot. Variances are for minimum lot area required. 10,000 is required, proposed is 6,250 square feet. Minimum lot width is, minimum lot width required is 85 feet, proposed is 50 feet. Minimum side yard both required is 25 feet, proposed is 20 feet. Effective property is located in the RBB zone in Block 922, Lot 1. B. All paperwork is in order.
Good evening, Mr. Wiley.
Good evening. This application is what we call a, an isolated undersized lot and as part of the record, I'd like to have marked for identification and introduction and evidence, letters dated November 7, 2018, to the property owner at 860 Beatrice Parkway, Calpess, and Regina Vicell, which consists of a letter indicating that we were going to apply to the board and submitting a questionnaire as to whether or not they wanted to buy our lot or not. We have a, a card indicating that they received a certified mail and signed for it. There was no response to that inquiry. The other adjoining property is owned by the Edison Township at 248 McKinley Street, Block 922, Lot 1A. Again, similarly, whether or not the township would be willing to buy this lot, along with a questionnaire, there was no response to that letter. And there was also a letter also to the township for Lot 2B and Block 922, again, asking if they wanted to buy the property. We got no response to those letters. So I'd like them marked as A1 and to introduce some, an evidence. The first is the architect to, for the project of a single-family house to be constructed on the site. Mr. Kumar will be sworn in shortly. I also have a planner to provide the legal justifications for the variances and that's Ms. McDonough. So at this point, I'd like to have Mr. Kumar come up and be sworn in. Probably it'd be best over here, the public will use that one. Now, it's important to get close to this mic for it to be recorded.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. You saved me.
You can pick up the microphone if you need to.
Right.
Do you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
And would you please state your full name for the record, spelling your last?
Paritosh Kumar.
Mr. Wiley, can you have him, oh, give us some qualifications?
I need his name again, please.
Paritosh Kumar.
He's supposed to be sworn in?
He's already been sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Can we have some qualifications, please?
Okay. Yes, certainly. What licenses do you possess with the state of New Jersey?
I'm a licensed architect with AIA, American Institute of Architects membership. I presented in front of this board several times and to a lot of other town zoning boards. We've been in business about 18 years now and, you know, several award-winning company are very close by. Last couple of months ago, we got Architect of the Year Award from Edison Chamber of Commerce. So, thank you for that.
Great, we'll accept your qualifications.
Thank you. Could you advise the board what has been your involvement with the property at 250 McKinley?
Well, I've been the architect since the beginning and.
Excuse me, Mr. Wiley, just so we have the record straight, I'm, I looked at something that said 250 and then I saw something that said 205.
It's 250.
It's 250. Okay, fine, because on the engineer's report, it's incorrect, but we'll correct it. Okay, fine, thank you. I just wanted to make sure everything is correct of the record.
Okay, could you then first describe the structure that's being proposed?
Can I show it over there?
Sure, if you've got exhibits.
Presented.
Are they the same as A1?
Yes.
Okay, then you can go over there and just bring the microphone with you.
Yeah, I know, but this, I just wanted to be sure. I just wanted to see what you had to say. Yes. So, these are context pictures all around over here. You see the houses all around this, this property. They're, they're, you know, significantly bigger houses than what we are proposing here and to start with, we are such a small and undersized lot, so that in itself was a hardship to, to start with. And however, we have complied with all the zoning requirements except for one combined, I mean, besides the, the pre-existing conditions, the, the lot size and the, and the lot width. But otherwise, anything new that we are doing, it's, it's just the combined site, site setback requirement that we're looking for a variance and that was impossible to even try to comply with that. We complied with all the other requirements. So, I would like to come back with this rendering that we did, which is, you know, it's, it's looking very nice. That's going to sit in the neighborhood over here, but I would like to explain the, the floor plan first.
And the floor pan is A2 of the cementals?
Yes, correct. So, so the first floor is, is the middle, is the middle diagram that you see. There's a recessed open porch on the left. You enter on the left side for certain reasons. The owner wanted to enter from the left side. So, you have a living room, a family room. This is a big open concept with a kitchen in the back, a one-car garage, and you enter from the, from the one-car garage, you go a couple of steps up to the, to the first floor and then you're going down into the basement. You have a powder room and a pantry right in this area over here. So this is pretty much an open, open floor plan and it gives them flexibility to, to arrange the furniture as, 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 as they like. In the back, we have some, like a wooden, a wood or a Trex deck and steps to get to the backyard. When you go to the upper, this is a two-story entrance foyer over here. So when you, when you enter here, it's, it's a little bit of an L-shaped stair. So when you, when you come up here, you have a master suite on the right side and then you have two additional bedrooms. So you have a master suite, has a master bedroom, a walk-in closet, and the common lobby has access to the two bedrooms with the closets, a stack, a stackable wash, wash dryer, laundry closet, and a bathroom. And of course, the two-story entrance foyer. So, so the second floor is stepped back, is set back and, and the first floor and the foundation and the basement is, in the front, is, is in line, it lines up. In the basement, if you go to the basement, right from this, this entrance lobby, this is all, the storage room, the bathroom, and the mechanical room, they are shown as going to be for, in, for, in the future, but it's going to be an unfinished basement at this time. So the mechanical room area is going to have all the mechanical, the mechanical, the hot water heater, furnaces and all that. So, so as you can see, the, the side setback requirement that was there for the five-foot combined setback that the variance we were looking for, the one-car garage cannot be made any smaller. The car is, has to fit in to, you know, it cannot be made any smaller than it is. On the left and then you have the stair, it cannot be made any smaller than it is. It's a minimum three foot. But if we made, if we took out another five feet from the living room, you have practically nothing left. You have from, you have from 16 feet over here and, and eight feet from here, you take out the five feet. This is all unusable space and on the second floor, if you take out from 13 feet, you take out five feet, you have a bedroom left only, only of eight feet. And, and over here, you have 11 minus five is about six feet. So it's going to be cut in half and we had no choice and they are, they are unusable bedrooms anyway. That size of, size of bedrooms and living room is really unusable. So we had no choice. We complied with all the other requirements, but the, and even the side setback requirements, we complied with all of those, but this was the only combined setback that was a hardship which, which we could not do. We had no choice for that.
I have no further questions to this witness. Does any board members have questions?
Okay, I have one. Sir, again, what did you say about the basement? That it's going to be made into rooms later on? Did you say that? Did I understand you correctly?
Yeah, it was going to be finished in the future, not at this time.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Ayat, Mr. Ayat?
Can we?
The basement's going to be finished in the future. Doesn't that have to be taken into consideration, the FAR?
No.
No? Okay.
Garages, attached garages.
Okay.
We don't have an FAR. Did you submit an FAR?
No.
No. I mean, there is, we don't trigger FAR.
Yeah, you're under.
Right.
Required is 37, you have 36.
Okay. Can I request a recess for five minutes at this point?
Sure, not a problem.
I have some questions I want to go on.
Recession for five minutes.
Okay.
Back? You okay, Mr. Wiley?
Yes, so I've spoken to my client.
We're back on record, and, no, go ahead, Mr. Wiley.
I've spoken to my client. The municipality doesn't have a copy of the standard FAR calculation, although it is on the plan, so we'll submit that, and we will provide in the notice that it's preliminary final, I'd call it, plot plan for constructing a single-family house. We'll add that to the notice. Everyone will get re-noticed, and we're not unsure when the date is going to be, but presumably it'll be in a couple months.
Yeah, probably August or September.
Right.
You'll call Lillian for that. Okay, does everybody understand that? The notice that in the, that was in the paper was not exactly correct, so Mr. Wiley has decided that he will re-notice everyone. You will all get notices again. There'll be a new date. I'm not sure of the date. He has to call the office in the morning and speak to the administrative assistant, and he will get a date. It will either be the end of August, or it'll be into September, but you will all be re-noticed again, okay? So having said that, Mr. Ayat, do you want to call the next case, and I guess we'll do the same thing for that, because we have the same problem there also. But let's get it on record at least, please.
All right, case Z-28, 2019.
Please, we have to be, excuse me, just one person at a time. We have to be able to pick him up on the recording. Go ahead, Mr. Ayat.
Ashesh Patel, 222 Nicholson Avenue, Edison, Section 37-63-1, Sections 2, 3, and 6. Bulk variances sought to construct a single-family home on an undersized lot. Variances are for minimum lot area required 10,000, proposed as 5,500 square feet. Minimum lot width required is 85 feet, proposed is 50 feet. Minimum side yard both required is 25 feet, proposed is 20 feet. Effective property is located in the RBB zone in Block 913, Lot 12. All paperwork is in order.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiley.
Same deficiency in this application as in the prior application, to which we should mark it as preliminary final plot plan, as well as submit a FAR on the standard stationary form of the municipality.
Okay, again, so it's just on record. It's the same problem. The notice just had a slight error, and just to make everything proper in accordance with all of the zoning ordinances, Mr. Wiley has to re-notice, which he will do, and everyone within 250 feet of the 222 Nicholson Avenue will get another notice with a new date. Again, it will either be August or September. Okay, thank you.
I just have one favor to ask.
Sure.
Since we're going to start this all over again, if I could have Exhibit A1 back.
Of course. Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiley.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your cooperation. Mr. Ayat, anything else to do?
Yes, we have resolutions to be adopted. Case number Z-16, 2019, Jessica Morris, granted May 28, 2019. Z-09, 2019, Sai Dada, granted April 30, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Aye.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you. See you next month.